Okay.
Okay.
We got locked in a room.
We'll be all the time.
I heard today.
So it's sad, you know, it's hard to do it.
Okay. Got to get ready.
Good thing he gets free.
Just don't bring his first field.
So you go for it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I've been asked to ask for a motion to continue the public hearing through September 8. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody who knows? Okay, so September 8, be here or be square. I know that was stupid to say, but I don't speak like that, I just came into my head. On the second, um, public hearing, I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed dogs at recreation of facilities, facilities, athletic fields and trails ordinance. So my second.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So now we have the public hearing on the dog ordinance. Um, and I have a list here of people that are here to speak, and the first person who's here to speak is Linda Scofield. Linda, three minutes, and please state where you live and your name.
Thank you, Linda Scofield, Free Ryan Circle. Um, I wholeheartedly support this, um, motion, um, but I'd actually ask that you expand the scope of it. Because dogs poop everywhere. And I'll give you some examples, it's annoying wherever it is when people don't pick it up. In my neighborhood.
Your neighborhood. It's not my dog.
Years ago, twelve years ago, there was somebody, I'm kind of back in the woods, so I don't see the lawn that's up by the road, but somebody's dog would poop regularly on my lawn and other people's lawns and never pick it up. And let me tell you, more than once at mowing, didn't see it in time, and that is really not a pleasant experience. Um, so that happens. Of course, these days, there are all sorts of ring cameras and, uh, critter cams and stuff you could use to catch the person who left that there. Um, Iron Horse, you know, I walk on Iron Horse from time to time. A lot of people leave their dog poop there, or even worse, they pick it up, put it in a bag, and leave it there. And I can tell you that having used, I used to be on the Performing Arts Center board, going to open up the ticket depot, and people would leave the bag on the counter of the tip of ticket windows. It's quite disgusting. I would really advocate that you have a dog poop collection barrel somewhere down off of Iron Horse, because so many people love their dogs there, and most of them are good and pick it up and bag it, but you know, they don't have any place to put it, so they're walking along with a little bag, which is very gross. Um, Curtis Park, and by the way, thank you for spraying poison ivy there after my last testimony. Um, but you know, I, as you heard last time I was here, I like to go and sit by the river and go for a swim. People, a lot of people take their dogs there, and they let their dogs poop all over the place there, and they don't pick it up. So I'll be sitting there reading my book, like, ew, what is that? And sure enough, there is dog poop there. Um, so it's a problem at a lot more places than just the parks that are listed. Um, you know, it's, it's difficult to enforce an ordinance that's, you know, prohibiting people from leaving their dog poop, but it does at least set a standard and expectation. And as I said, with the number of cameras that are around in life, people are beginning to realize they can't get away with stuff. Um, and you could document it, you know, from other people using their phone or their doorbell camera or whatever. Um, I, I just would add that if humans poop everywhere that dogs poop and left it there, people would be up in arms, because it's a health problem. And guess what, dog poop is not a whole lot better than human poop. Um, so we shouldn't have that all over our internet and your water.
Thank you. I didn't know this was, the hearing was gonna be so graphic.
That's right. It was in the newspaper as the dog poop hearing.
This is the big news. Uh, Mike Germano, Michael.
Thank you, um, Michael Germano, One David Drive. I'm, um, I'm here on behalf of Simsbury Valley again, I'm the president of that organization. Um, and I'm here to offer mental support to Culture Parks and Rec and, um, what they've put before the, the board. Um, because they've done so much to support us, um, over the years. Um, there's two issues going on, there's the issue we just heard about, but then there's also the facilities maintenance part of things, and I think both are equally as important. Um, the, the Parks and Rec Department and their employees will tirelessly to help us. Um, I am in frequent communication with them, um, almost on a daily basis throughout the course of the season, um, trying to make sure that those fields, the fields are appropriately, um, maintained, through winter, uh, spring, summer, fall, um, and various, uh, conditions that we get. We are very conservative with our field use. We close our fields, um, have, uh, after, um, what sometimes is an insignificant, insignificant amount of rain. Um, people hate getting the texts or the emails saying fields are closed, can't play baseball tonight, but we send them routinely to try to protect those fields. A lot of times when those fields are closed, especially over the winter, when the, uh, the clay and the grass can't recover, um, the dog usage creates a maintenance burden on the town and, um, our volunteers. Um, the other issue, uh, on the, on the sanitary side of things is, is pretty straightforward. This is a common sense solution to try to keep dog activity in the waste all of the fields. Um, the testimony that we heard about the, the bags is, is something that's not new to me either, unfortunately, having to pick it up, um, not only off the, um, off the fields, but off the, um, out of the dugouts where the kids are going to, uh, be playing that night. So, um, I did send, um, a letter to the board, so I can, I hope you had a chance to review it, thank you for that, if you did, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, but again, we're here to support Parks and Rec, um, they do a good job of supporting us, and anything that we can do to, um, assist them in what they do for us, um, we'd like to provide.
Um, next up, Ben.
I promise you I'm not getting addicted to doing this, but, um, Ben Berger, 18 Joshua Drive. I am here in my capacity, uh, as the president of the soccer club, and, uh, really echo, uh, what, um, Mike just said. Um, Culture Parks and Rec does an excellent job, um, keeping the fields in condition. Uh, our volunteers do an excellent job working to supplement that. I'm a dog owner, I love my dog, um, but I can tell you, when you've got a thousand kids running around on fields and there's dog wastes, um, it's not a great combination, and this ordinance seems common sense, it seems reasonable, it seems targeted, it seems appropriate as a way to maintain that. Uh, to echo something else Mike said, you know, when you, you could walk out on Curtis, when we opened the fields, the process of opening all of our fields, and, you know, the snow has started to melt, uh, what, what hasn't necessarily started to melt is three or four months' worth of canine droppings that people have left over the course of the summer, when they let their, their dogs roam, you know, and then don't know where, whatever it is they've done, it was ended up, or slowly started to sink, or whatever, so, not to be too graphic, but trying to paint a picture. Uh, we think it's common sense, we think it's appropriate, uh, we support it, and, uh, think it's, you know, and think it's an important development that will be great for the health of our kids and for, you know, for the fields and for the community.
Um, okay, Anita Muntz.
Hi, thank you. Uh, this is my first time coming and speaking in a situation like this. Um, I, but my son alerted me to this meeting, because he knew that it was a hot topic for me. Um, I can't tell you how many times I go for a walk. And everywhere, the little bags with the poop in it, why can't people just take it home? My son has a dog, you know, he lives in Virginia, the whole community is good about picking up their dog droppings in the bags and taking it. They actually have receptacles in their community where you could take it. He lives closer to the, to home, so he just takes it home and throws it away there. Um, I, I grew up with a dog. I love dogs, but I really have no patience for human beings who are so inconsiderate. Um, my house backs up on a fence, um, that is on a, uh, well-traveled road, and because it seems as though maybe nobody's gonna be bothered by it, because it's on the roadside of the fence instead of, you know, inside my property, I don't realize people walk on this walking path all the time. And when I see poop and the empty, and, and the bag with the poop in it, it's, um, it, it, it's a very discourteous thing, and, you know, dogs can't poop where they go, but their owners should take responsibility. And, um, and, and I, I mean, I love seeing the dogs swimming in the, in the river over Curtis. Um, they're having so much fun, it's delightful. Uh, I have witnessed some people picking up after them, and that, you know, that's wonderful, but not everybody does. And there isn't a receptacle, there's no place that I've seen where there's a garbage pail or a designated, um, waste receptacle for this. And, um, I, 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 I think we kind of need that, and I, and it's especially, okay, so dogs on leashes, I think are a great idea, because then you're with them, and, and, you know, you can see what they're doing and just pick it up. And then it doesn't create the problem on the fields, you know, during a game, um, or even not during the game. Um, I, well, I lost my train of thought, but that, I pretty much got it. And, and I'm really grateful, Linda, and Ben, and the rest of the students. I apologize for not recalling, but you, you touched most of my points, and thank you very much, because it's been fun.
Thank you.
If you just state your name and your address, I need a Monday, 30 Horseshoe Circle, thank you.
Okay, um, Diane Moody.
You know, I, um, Diana Moody, uh, 7 Elsie Way. Uh, first of all, I'm here to support, uh, Tom's well-written ordinance. I agree, I agree with everything that everybody else has said before. Uh, one of the things that, um, sort of don't agree on is that, that the town should have receptacles for dog owners to put their waste in. It's not the town's responsibility to come up after them, cats and pet owners, those and that. So what this ordinance does, and, uh, Tom's objective is to make it a cleaner and safer environment. I just, and I, I, I did write to Tom, I just have a couple of, uh, an idea, it's just to expand the vantage. And that would include, because he talks about all these ordinances, um, from the parks, he has the, the specific names for the parks, and then he said the trails, you know, we have a lot of different trails here. So what trails are we talking about? I mean, talking about the space trails of the parks, I mean, the park, up the woods, those parks. We have our multi-use trails, um, and those, what else? Uh, and so we just really need to be clear on what trails, what it causes, uh, the leash, obviously. I think I understood that, I don't think there's a place in the country where there isn't a dog leash law. And I like the fact that he added the, um, the fines. Well, I think that is always helpful, you know, to deter people, you know, even some signage, I know we don't want signage everywhere. This kind of signage, I think, can encourage people not to do that. But I also think, uh, with the leashes adding the, the, uh, no retractable leashes, they are very dangerous. I know, um, multi-use trails, um, people have injured themselves because their dog owners, they're on one side, the dog is on the other side, so they're walking, also the cyclists, and I know two people personally that ran through those none, those retractables, because they couldn't see them and they wanted to call them. So they also can snap dogs' necks. So if you, if you look it up, you can't read anything positive about the retractable leashes. So I would ask that maybe you add the, uh, the retractable leashes. Um, other than my suggestions, thank you, Tom. I think, uh, it's, it's, it's very, I'm.
Thank you. Mark?
Hi, my name's Mark Hevler, I live at Eight Seasons Trail, so I am the president, I'm Simsbury Babe Ruth, I'm here representing Babe Ruth, American Legion Baseball and the CCBL Baseball. Um, I agree with Mike, there's, there's a lot of time and energy that goes into maintaining these fields, and the town does a fantastic job. I also volunteer scheduling all these fields for high school, Legion, Babe Ruth, you know, and I, and I do all that, right? So I will tell you that, I know I talked to Tom, Pound Forest is not listed on that. I pulled up a picture literally of a water fountain that doesn't work anymore, that people use as a garbage can, and there's literally dog waste bags everywhere. So we tie bags onto the dugout fences, people use it for that, we put up the, you know, no poop fairy signs all over the place, that didn't work. You know, so literally, in the winter, I walk the field with a chain and locks that I keep in my basement. It's the only way to keep the fields from being destroyed. You know, there's constant stuff, it's hidden, nobody sees it. People have asked me, why doesn't the town put a garbage can down there? Nobody picks it up, right? There, the town doesn't have a way to go down there and pick it up, and the town's already short-staffed anyway, especially the Recreation Department. Um, we constantly have raised money, myself, Tim Vincent, and the Baseball Alliance, we've put up, you know, a $30,000 scoreboard, $26,000 worth of batting cages for the, the older players. We've done all that ourselves without, you know, asking for anything. So one of the things that has really driven me crazy is sometimes I have to pick up poop myself. I have to go out there, like Mike was saying, when the snow melts, and, you know, we, it's like you're out there picking it up. Kids play baseball there, you know, and, and I've had people where I said, hey, you probably should pick that up. When they're on the field, we're getting ready for a game, and their dogs digging at home plate, tearing up all the lines and everything we just fixed. Right, so, and people say, well, it's a park, and I said, well, that's why we all pay taxes for a dog park. Right, I don't think people realize that, they just go and think it's a park, they don't realize it's an athletic field. So one of the things that Tim Vincent and I had talked about is putting up signs on these baseball fields that say, by authorized use only. But we have to get that cleared, you know, so all the signs that are at Memorial Field, the Big Field, we've done all that work and put up all those signs. You know, so, and we've raised a bunch of money for just fixing the press box and all these other items, so. Um, yeah, I think it's a great idea, you know, I, I don't know how you enforce it, you know, there's people all over the place, and, you know, we told people to pick up your dog, you know, waste and get off the field, we've asked them to do it, and they repeatedly, you know, some people just don't even pay attention to it. So I'm guessing a fine might help that, I don't know if that's gonna be the case or not, but, you know, so. I know I talk to Tom a lot, you know, about all the times that we do things at the fields, and their guys do such a great job. The one thing they don't do is pick up dog waste, so, and it's not their job, it's the job is to maintain the field, so, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there, is there anyone else here for the public hearing? Okay, um, you can get up and state your name and, um, add to.
I signed something, it's not worth, I was.
Oh.
Hi, Jill Peral, 12 Riverside Road, dog mom to several dogs. Um, part of me does support this, I think dog waste is disgusting. I walk my dogs typically along Iron Horse. I also walk on the soccer field by the Performing Arts Center, I walk the perimeter. I was approached by a soccer coach a couple of years ago. Lady, dogs are not allowed on here, and I'm a rule follower. Said, really, where's the sign? Well, it's common knowledge. I said, well, clearly it's not, and I kept going. I pick up after my dogs all the time. I have poop bags in my bag, in my car, in my pockets, my pocketbook, everywhere, it's a joke with my friends. I pick up after other people's dogs, so I'm probably the oddball. I'm gonna continue to walk on that soccer field, whether there's an ordinance or not, I pick up after my dogs. I, I understand what you're all saying, it is disgusting, I'm out in my backyard every single day picking up. But there's one receptacle for dog waste on Iron Horse. And if I get 20 feet down and my dog decides to poop and I pick it up, I don't turn around and go back, I carry it for the duration of my walk. Why aren't there, there should be at least one more receptacle on Iron Horse. I can't just speak to any of the other parks or locations, because that's where I walk. But, and I don't want to hear, oh, we don't have anybody to pick it up. The money that we pay in taxes, come on, you don't have to have someone picking up from those receptacles daily, once a week? I mean, come on, and I'm sure we could get a business in town who's a dog lover to donate one, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, is there anybody else here?
Wendy, could I have a minute?
Sure.
Then three. I probably don't need three.
Sally Rieger, 9 St. Morave. And I feel like I'm unauthorized to speak, because I haven't read the ordinance, but I just wanted to ask and make sure that it would be legitimate and accepted and in the ordinance, that someone who is raising a service dog like Fidelco can take that dog onto a soccer field and sit and watch a game with that dog on a leash. And, because that is the only way those dogs get socialized to be in a crowd like that. My family has raised several of those dogs, and I know it makes a big difference in people's lives.
Thanks, Sally.
I'm done.
Tom has that covered, and we're gonna talk about that later. Um, so, I'd like to ask to close this public hearing. Um, it's, it's an easy, short plan to, to, um, consider tonight, um, and it's pretty cut and dry, so. Uh, if I could get a motion to close the public hearing, will move.
Second, but I do have a constitution.
Well, we're gonna talk about the.
Yeah, no, it's not the public hearing.
Oh, sure.
Um, I'll second, but then I'll tell the first discussion.
Oh, sure, any discussion.
Request, um, that there has been some correspondence that we received as Board of Selectmen via email. Can we please include that correspondence in our minutes that was regarding this public hearing?
I don't see why not, we don't normally.
Would a summary be okay?
A summary would be fine, um, if we could do that, though, because we did receive, uh, quite a bit of, of, uh, public comments on email, and I think it's fair to, since it was public hearing for it, to be published.
Okay, great.
To say, thank you.
Okay, um, all those in favor, those in, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and nobody's opposed. Okay, so the public hearing for that is closed. Um, now we have the public hearing on the tax exempt. Do you know what? Effective date of a tax exemption, channel, um, three, I don't know if you really care, the tax exempt, but, um.
They're gonna wait for the vote.
The public hearing for the proposed effective date, so first I'm gonna move to open the public hearing on the proposed effective date of a tax exemption on real property opposition of the qualifying tax exempt entities ordinance. So, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Um, since there's nobody here to speak to the public hearing, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on the tax exempt? Thank you. Ordinance.
Thank you.
I'd like to motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that public hearing is closed. Okay, now, we are at the public audience portion of the meeting. And, um, the first person, this is a five-minute, um, uh, opportunity to speak, and I would ask, I see Sally Rieger's on here.
Some fogging the stage, Tony, we are.
But that's okay, that's, we're here, we're here.
Sally Rieger, 9 St. Morave, I'm here on Quick Business. I distributed the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook well and senior committees annual report to those of you who have offices in the building, but some of you don't. So I brought them tonight, so I can get you each one. Yeah, sorry. Did you find those?
I saw them in the, in the.
Have another one, thank you. We have a lot. Thank you, Sam. Here we go.
So. This just documents what we have done as a committee, I'm an appointed representative to the committee from Simsbury. It's kind of an odd committee, it's got, uh, nine member towns on it, and each member town appoints two representatives, or three, not yes. Um, and then the National Park Service, the T, and the Quavik River Watershed Association and the Farmington River Watershed Association are also members of the committee. And somebody looked a little puzzled about the Quavik River, it's the biggest tributary to the Farmington, and it's also the most polluted, so, and we have been told by their representative that we better pay attention to them, because we, and we do support that area for cleaning up efforts. So, that's it.
Yeah.
We very love.
Nice to see you. Thank you, Sally.
Yeah, the next person is Joan Coe.
Joan Coe, 26, Woodford Drive. Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio, running for reelection in 2025, Board of Selectmen. This is a portion of a trust with the assurance that the laws are made to be followed by all people, apart from none. However, over the past month, Steve Antonio has violated the rule of law. There appears to be a pattern of entitlement with the Planning and Community Development Department that not only allows him to violate road zoning regulations, but comes to his defense when questioned of signage on his properties. Many of the questioned violations remain, giving Steve Antonio special treatment, while others must defend their positions with costly fees and violations with letters of persistent violations. The property behind Dunkin' Donuts has a parking lot filled with storage of cars, boats, RVs, et cetera, that was previously owned by Wagner Ford. The property is now owned by Steve Antonio, and the rent is paid to him for storage. There is no documentation of the planning department, Steve Antonio abused his property for storage. Richard Wagner died December 17, 2009, 2009. The property was owned by Wagner Ford dealership. Steve Antonio purchased a land from Wagner for $1.5 million, April 14, 2015. The business is registered as Antonio Five LLC, May 16, 2013. The business address is 133 Holcomb Street, the same address for the home of Steve Antonio. Wagner Ford permanently closed around the late 2020 seven to 20, early 2008. Wagner family paid the taxes until the property was sold. Abandonment of property, a key factor that it is, that can extinguish the right to a non-conforming use is abandonment. Abandonment is no use of the property from six months to a year. Wagner Ford closed the business permanently in 2008. Steve Antonio purchased the property in 2015, leaving the property vacant for seven years. Joe Hollis, Code Compliance Officer, Monday, July 21, 2025, said that Wagner did not send a letter of abandonment, therefore the property was not abandoned, it was grandfathered in for Antonio. Why should Wagner send a letter of abandonment when his property sold for $1.5 million? I am asking Town Manager Mark Nelson to review the actions of the Department of Planning and Community Development in interaction with Steve Antonio to investigate any impropriety in dealing with Steve Antonio on land use. Town Manager Mark Nelson should report his findings to the Board of Selectmen in open session. The Director of Simsbury Community Television, SETV, has resigned with what appears to be no plan, as we see tonight, for succession from their Board of Directors. SETV is a valued asset to the community by televising meetings and many other activities, which are available for future viewing by the public. The solution for the community would be to move SETV from Eno Hall to the library for an increase in media access under the direction of the library. Social services could drop their office space in Eno Hall, the Town Hall, and the Police Department could take over the entire building. The only stipulation in the D is to have the DAR remain in the building. The Police Department would be in the center of town and visible to the public. This would give the Police Department much-needed added space, and social services and Town Hall would integrate with all the other service departments and asset to the community. The soccer club is proposing using synthetic, synthetic fields on the field at Curtis Park. This should be rejected, and more research is available that documents environmental issues added and added injuries to the players. Synthetic served fields contain toxic substances, surface has high heat causing skin burns and equalated illness, and contain microplastics. Placement of natural grass with synthetic turf could lead to loss of wildlife and could remain and should remain in its present state. The pickleball courts at Carrotville Park are an asset to the town, replaced, filling up the courts daily. It appears that many of the commercial properties in Simsbury have lost much of their value due to economic condition. The depreciation of the property with lower revenues, the town. The depreciation of the property with lower revenues, the town, and place the burden of uh, lost revenue to the homeowner unless the budget spending is greatly reduced. The Board of Selectmen of the nominees should be asked now that they are campaigning for office what they would do to reduce the budget to reflect the downtime and need time.
Thank you, Joan.
Town farm managed by Thrive Farm, Eno Farm, and political housing owned by C H F A, remaining in the late Sabino's brother and should be resolved.
Joan, can you wrap it up, please? It's over time.
Uh, all of our comments will be posted on Simsbury app and uh, and Twitter at Joan Coe.
Thank you.
Also, I'm concerned about the dump.
Thank you.
And social services, which is part of Eno Trust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to point, I was going to say this in my first life and his report, but I just want to point out that in our communications section, there is a history from the town on this um, thing and all the facts are there. People want to read that. Um, and some of the comments that were made last meeting in this meeting. Um, the next item we have is our consent agenda. And I would like to um, ask for a motion to move items C and D to the consent agenda. I'm not sure if anybody has any other things that they'd like to add.
I'd like to add E if we can put the barn lease in consent unless anyone has any questions or comments on subject.
It's, it's pretty straightforward to handle business, correct, Mark?
Yes, it is, Chair.
Okay.
Just give me one minute, I serve qualifying.
Anything that could happen?
I have nothing, I have nothing substantive. I think the head of draft players, we can put that in the consent if everybody's here, or knows of the town.
Sure. Okay, so um, the motion is for items C, D, and E to the consent agenda.
The move.
Second.
Second, whichever, sorry.
Oh, that's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we have a couple of presentations. Um, let's get to this number first. So tonight we are honoring John Thibodeau for thirty-nine years of service and the town has a certificate of appreciation that he's not here for. But I would like to ask Tom Tversky, um, if he'd like to come up and pay some accolades for us and for yourself too, Tom.
Sure.
Oh, you want to see the?
Could you hold it up, Chair, just for the, for the, the staff things? Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. I don't want to top it.
I can.
You can take a picture.
I'm going to get you.
The real plan?
No, I want one with you holding it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. It's, it's an honor to be up here to uh, recognize John Thibodeau um, for his years, years of service. It's thirty-nine and a half years. Um, John, John was a mentor to me when I first started here in nineteen ninety-nine. He was the other recreation supervisor when I was hired as a recreation supervisor. So I had a chance to learn the ropes of the town up under, uh, working alongside John for eleven years before I left uh, service here to go grandy and then came back and, and you know, John's still here and still doing a great job. Uh, so this is an, it's a sad moment, it's a sad time, but it's an exciting time for, for John and his family. Um, so I have some brief, some briefing marks here. After nearly thirty-nine and a half years of service as Simsbury's community uh, recreation supervisor, John Thibodeau will retire on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth. John has been a fixture at Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex overseeing the town's summer aquatics and winter ice cream programming for, for many of those years. During his tenure, he has touched the lives of literally thousands of Simsbury's youth, as many of them have worked their very first job as a lifeguard or a skate guard at Simsbury Farms. John's career with the town of Simsbury has had him planning and direct, directing countless special events and programs that have brought members of the community together. John has chaperoned middle school dances, run games at Halloween parties, judged sandcastle contests at Town Forest Park. He was also instrumental with the successes of the popular opening night and Simsbury Celebrates event. And he was the staff member behind such memorable events at Simsbury Farms as the Inbiddy Pool Party and the world's biggest ice cream sundae at the annual Ice Cream Social. John would be the very first one to tell you that his greatest successes with the town of Simsbury are with the seasonal staff members he has trained and mentored through the years and he has taken, and he, he takes great pride not only in their tremendous level of service and dedication to the Culture Parks and Recreation Department, but also in seeing them succeed in their chosen career paths and becoming great parents to their own children. The programs and facilities that John has overseen have had remarkable safety records and great financial success for the town. John Thibodeau has been, has been and always will be a part of Simsbury Farms. He is leaving a positive legacy of service to the town of Simsbury and he leaves his friends and colleagues in admiration of a great career and wishing that he and his family enjoy a happy and healthy retirement. I can tell you that John, and John is very excited. He's sad to leave his service of the town, but if he, he and his family uh, are moving on to the next chapter in his life, he's got a great home, uh, that he will be out of state, uh, close to the beach, closer to his grandkids. Um, so he's excited about what lies before him and um, looks back, I think, very fondly on his career.
Thank you. Give him a round of applause. Excellent. Thanks. We thank John.
Uh, I want to just, on behalf of all the staff, this is a notorious Simsbury month uh, and base which we present very rarely, but it's my, my honor. On, this is from the staff, uh, in addition to the proclamation room and if you give them our very best, thanks so much.
And so the next presentation that we have um, is really for September and it's about suicide prevention awareness, awareness month. And um, Honor Connor, which is a, is a local um, five oh one C three that is here to get the word out on suicide prevention. Um, it was founded in the memory of Connor Johnson, a Simsbury native who lost his life to suicide. Um, I said it's a five oh one C three, dedicated to stopping the stigma around mental health, offering hope and healing to suicide loss survivors and providing tools and resources to prevent future loss. So they have some plans for the month of September and one of them was to ask the board um, if we would issue a proclamation, which we have done in the past. Um, so we're going to read a proclamation, but I, um, they did want me to acknowledge that there will be a September event, Hold On To Hope Live, Free Clinic Act Educational Support Group for Suicide Loss Survivors hosted at Simsbury Public Library on Thursday, September fourth, six to eight P M. It's open to anybody impacted and I'll, I'll include that in my first lessons report. Um, so I'd like to ask um, the board to help read the proclamation. Kevin, you want to start?
Sure.
Town of Simsbury proclamation, September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas since nineteen fifty-eight, when the first suicide prevention center in the United States opened, and since nineteen seventy, when the first suicide prevention task force was created, to nineteen ninety-six, when Congress passed two resolutions recognizing suicide as a national problem and suicide prevention as a national priority, the conversation regarding suicide prevention is now more important than ever and.
Whereas suicide has touched the lives of many, whether through personal experience or the loss of a loved one, and every effort we make to prevent it can spare families, friends, and communities from profound grief and heartache and.
Whereas the National Suicide Prevention Week is September seventh to the thirteenth and World Suicide Prevention Day is September tenth and.
Whereas international, national, and local organizations like the International Association for Suicide Prevention, American Association of Suicidology, and Honor Connor offer helpful resources, hope, and healing to individuals and families who have experienced this kind of unimaginable loss and.
Whereas Simsbury is committed to normalizing the conversation and reducing the stigma around mental health and creating compassionate spaces for support and connection.
Now therefore we get resolved, we, the Board of Selectmen hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Simsbury and call upon all Simsbury residents to raise awareness, educate themselves, and look out for others regarding suicide prevention. So um, like a motion to um, effective August eleventh, twenty twenty-five to adopt the proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, first selectments report, or we say I'm going to keep it short. I try. Um, the first thing I'd like to um, talk, mention is the Manassas approval for the tax waiver. I just wanted to say that Mark, after our meeting um, in June, um, followed up on all that and O P N did approve the tax waiver um, in a letter to Mark Nelson. Um, they received it on July twenty-fifth and they said the town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen took the appropriate action required um, to abate the taxes and therefore the to, in accordance with general statutes, they did approve this. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Um, the second item I have is a big, big thank you to Patrick Fallon who has left Simsbury Community Media after six years. Um, he's taking a new position, full-time position in New Haven. And um, he's helped Simsbury Community Media through many upgrades. He's helped with many a town meeting with candidate videos, town programming, and he was just really a nice, fun person to walk with, um, work with and talk to and I'll miss him. Um, I would like to see Kevin, if you'd like to say anything as a board member?
No, sure. Thank you. I was planning on, on saying something as well.
Okay.
And it's bittersweet knowing that he's moving on to something great uh, for his own professional career and growth and that we could never keep uh, somebody as a greater contributor as him, but uh, as Simsbury TV is live, uh, now we, we ended up with a bump, so I won't say that there won't be some transition with somebody like him, but uh, lots of great volunteers continue to serve if those are interested in serving and and being a part of uh, of community television, either using uh, the resources down there that Patrick uh, was successful in securing grants and resources that's available to the entire community and I'm thankful to this board for uh, the support of Simsbury TV. Um, you know, in the past here, it's a great resource for the community. We will absolutely miss Patrick and his uh, leadership there, but looking forward to a new chapter for both uh, the station and for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the, the other item I wanted to bring up and this will go out in the report is um, the town met with USA Waste. Um, they had, we had gotten some emails expressing concern, some residents and businesses. Um, but we met with them, with their senior management team, um, and the plan from the town manager's office is to meet biannually with them to make sure that we're up on anything going on, um, to facilitate, facilitate a smooth transition. Um, as everybody should be aware that P E N S, um, USA Waste acquired P E N S in December of twenty twenty-four and also I believe acquired Always, but I don't have the timeline on that. Um, the town recognizes the importance of good communications between USA and, and the, and Simsbury because the town is a customer, the businesses are a customer and we are all customers.
We don't choose.
Yeah. They did say they're working to modernize their fleet and technology. I think they said they had new trucks on order. Um, so, so that's important. I am going to include their website and a contact phone number for people. And one of the things that I did, he did ask about, um, I asked how many people in town have bear locks on their garbage? And it's really fifteen percent. Um, so just, I'm not selling them because I don't have one and I'm probably not going to get one, but it's twelve dollars a month on your bill if you're interested. Um, and if you could be like the rest of us and put our garbage in the garage. Um, so, so that's the all, USA Waste, um.
Maybe you want to add a dog waste collection service from there?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe Lucre.
Maybe we could.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing I want to acknowledge is um, it, on Monday, August eighteenth, the Lieutenant Governor will host an event for Vietnam and Korean veterans who live in Simsbury. She has organized this event in many communities across the state. It's our turn now. Um, is to thank all those who served along with their families. So um, if you're a veteran of those wars or related to one, you're welcome to attend this event um, Monday and all the times and everything and the town, the board is invited and so are some state elected and um, potentially other, um. Where's that coming from? It's uh, no, it's had Henry James.
It's Sophie Bunn.
Yeah, Henry James. Um, and I, oh, I have to thank Franklin Baruko in the town manager, in the town manager's office, the American Legion, the V F W, the D A R for helping with um, get this organized, making sure we have the right people invited. So I just want to thank Mark for the staff that helped do this. Um, and I also want to just acknowledge some more communications. I've already mentioned the one on the Wagner property. But there are some important communications that are in the package tonight. One is on the potential solar project at the Talkamount Collective slash Disc Golf area. Um, so I would say, you know, public, that's out there for you to, to acknowledge and read. And then the other item that I had asked for that's awesome and there is an update to the public and to the board on the Two Farms Village property. So just pay attention to those. And with that, I will turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it and good evening, everybody. Uh, we've got a, a lot's been going on uh, over the summer and certainly over the last month. I'll try to go through this as quickly. Some of these are really, really cool. Um, when you get a chance, first, please come see our renovated clock tower right outside of Town Hall. I know some of you have noticed that. Um, it's uh, of course, our thanks to Simsbury Volunteer Fire Company and About Time. Uh, uh, and also take a look at the updated surrounding brickwork uh, and all the names on those individual brook, uh, bricks going back many years. Uh, the tower has a new spire, uh, and a new plant commemorating the rebuild. Uh, the gold accents are really cool. I have some great pictures of it uh, in uh, in the report, uh, and of course a fresh paint job. So we are, uh, and I sent, I think, or Franklin did send an email on this recently, uh, but reminding to please save the date, September eighth at five thirty P M, just before that board meeting. Uh, there's going to be a uh, a, a brief commemoration ceremony to celebrate the, the clock tower's renovation uh, right in front of Town Hall and the public as well. Uh, on August seventh, I was invited to uh, speak and chat with residents of uh, uh, the Power Forest Homeowners Association uh, to discuss a lot of the things going on in town. Want to thank all of them and particularly uh, Jerry Epstein for inviting me uh, and for uh, a lot of really good questions about uh, everything Simsbury. This weekend, I was able to attend the Simsbury Performing Arts Center's twentieth anniversary concert and I know although Chair, you didn't mention it, I saw, I saw you there. Uh, I didn't see you dancing, but I did, I think I saw Diana and Stephen and maybe Kevin and others, but uh, Heather was there, I know. And, and you were there too. Everybody was there. Uh, just want to thank Pat Fallon, uh, although everybody else already has, but you know, our staff works, uh, work really hand in hand with uh, Pat uh, from S C T V and on behalf of the staff here, we want to wish him the best in his new role uh, in New Haven. Please stay in touch. Um, as we're going to miss you. Uh, Human Resources uh, wanted me to uh, ask everybody to join them in welcoming our new uh, most recent UConn intern. Um, we get her name right, is Abby Boyer. Uh, we got a snapshot of her in the town uh, manager report as well. Uh, and for those who, who don't know, will remind you uh, that every year we get a UConn uh, uh, intern. In the past, it's been a town manager intern. This is the first time we've got an H R intern to help uh, move some things along on the human resources front that really she's going to be working to make sure we're in compliance, which is our, uh, our, our, our constant goal. So welcome, Abby. Um, Culture Parks and Recreation, on July sixteenth, I attended the Terracotta Park Pickleball Courts, Grind and Cutting. Uh, that was fun. I, I did not get to play pickleball, but I almost said Joan that I will, you're, you're going to get a picture of me out there on the pickleball court at one of these times and everybody on the board was there. So uh, and we got some great uh, photos of that as well. Uh, and we saved some money, Chair, which uh, we'll get back to this board on some ideas that you would ask us to uh, come up with to uh, further help the Terracotta community. Um, and thanks for, for Tom's work. End of Summer Blast at Simsbury Farm. I, in front of you, uh, board members, is the fire uh, which uh, the short story is there, August twenty-third from five a.m. and the Summer Blast, uh, live music and uh, uh, fireworks. It's going to be quite, uh, quite a show. Uh, we'll also see many of you in the public at Burgers on the Bridge, uh, which has been on my calendar for uh, a, a long time. And that is Wednesday, September tenth from four to six thirty, uh, and everybody knows uh, where that is. So um, just two more quick things, Chair. If you'll indulge in the library on Wednesday, July thirtieth, Public Works co-hosted the Simsbury Public Library's Popular Story Town uh, with the head of Children's Services, uh, Stephanie Prado. Uh, some of you on, on the board have seen uh, the, the photos of this tremendous turnout uh, and the kids really enjoyed it. There were songs and stories and time to explore a variety of our trucks and equipment. And I just want to say, Tom Roy is just the best at uh, our, our mission of Public Works Director. He's just amazing. And looking at that, I couldn't attend that one myself, but uh, everybody looking at the pictures had a great time. Police, uh, S P D hosted uh, a rabies clinic on June seventh, I think. Uh, uh, somebody who also attended that at the Littawatt Firehouse and Animal Control Officer Deb Clark coordinated a regional effort that included seven other municipalities, municipalities around the area uh, and also arranged for veterinarian services to provide uh, rabies vaccinations at a significantly reduced cost. And I'm told that a good number of Simsbury residents actually did take advantage of that. So I wanted to thank Deb, uh, the police chief and, and all the staff uh, downstairs that, that worked on that. School Resource Officers, uh, Michael Antieri and Chris Shan, accompanied three of the Simsbury Police Cadets for a week-long cadet academy at Westfield State University in July. Uh, the annual academy is designed to provide youth ages fourteen to twenty with a variety of life and field experiences, education, discipline, career insight, and connection with peers and mentors and, and the law enforcement community generally. Um, as you all know, the S P D cadet program had been going strong, has been going strong for twenty-five years. Uh, so want to thank everybody that's been involved in that. Students uh, between the ages of fourteen and twenty commit to the opportunity to learn about contemporary policing uh, as well as volunteerism, which is really life's still been given. So uh, our hats off to everybody that was involved in that. And then finally, Chair, in Public Works, we did get a bunch of inquiries on. uh our hats off to everybody that was involved in that. And then finally, Chair, in Public Works, we did get a bunch of inquiries on this. Uh, a number of public inquiries. I wanted to end with this. The pond in Town Forest Park has been drained, as you know, to allow for dredging. Uh, the bottom of the pond has been dug up to prevent the pond from being choked by sediments. And materials have been removed and deposited along the banks where they're drying, but they will be removed. So uh just want to let everybody know that uh that these efforts are ultimately going to improve water quality uh returning it to a cleaner, healthier pond suitable for recreation activities. But the bad news is you don't expect that to be done until uh mid to late September. So uh we've got a little bit more work to do up there and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mark, can you just give a brief, a quick update on Seminary Road, just so that the public knows?
Yeah.
And that it's clear.
I I didn't bring my notes on this, but you know, the water main leak was significant. Uh, and the damage to the road was significant and it's very near to our folks. Uh, work get that cleared up. There was disruption. I I I think I'm worried a few days. So uh I should say thank you to the neighbors and all those uh folks who were uh impacted by that. Um, it 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 was unfortunate from our perspective because we had just done some paving over there. So uh you know, uh it's never a good time for a water main break, but uh thanks to everybody that helped remediate.
Okay, um, so let's move on to select and liaison and subcommittee first. And this time I'm going to go this way. I'm Sharpe Curtis.
Um, so the police commission was canceled today. Um, so we had a meeting before this um for uh zoning, we had a presentation on dark skies. Um, so to understand both light pollution, uh, thanks to, uh, so I was mentioning about Southfield dark sky written there. Um, and then we had the police that uh graduation that was within that.
That was on Friday.
Friday.
Friday at eleven o'clock in Washington.
That's why.
Curtis and I, I was there and it was great uh Officer Lantieri and Officer Shan.
I don't have anything to report. I haven't had anything. I have a lot coming up in the next two weeks, but I haven't had much the last since the last meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I'm just going to mention that Personnel Subcommittee was moved um for the for the town to to finish up some of our business till next Thursday. I did share that with the library board because it came up um at the Kevin, the meeting, so I made sure that they knew about that. Um, I'm going to turn it over to the seat.
Same with me. EDC's last meeting was workshop, so I did not attend. Uh, Simsbury Main Street is holding the fifteenth annual A Taste in Simsbury. It's going to feature thirty-nine local restaurants, breweries and distillers on Thursday, August twenty fourth first um down the street. The tickets are all-inclusive and feature unlimited gourmet food bites, craft beers, special drinks and desserts. Tickets are available in person at Fitzgerald Foods, Wild and Hardware in the Wine House, as well as shop simsbury.com. Simsbury Main Street is also working on an office space vacancy issue. This issue is also affecting all of Hartford County as well as the entire country. Main Street will approach this in conjunction with partners as well as the town, and they will create a database that can be explored to ultimately fill our large amount of vacant office spaces as they stand or with alternative uses. Main Street is also working on a partnership with placer.ai. That is a location analytics company that collects and analyzes data from mobile phones in an anonymized manner. In turn, this will help us understand consumer behavior, track track foot traffic and gain a competitive edge with insight and suggestions to spur economic development. So basically what that meant was they follow anonymously cell phones, come up with data where someone comes to Simsbury, what they do with Simsbury and when they leave, where they go outside of Simsbury, which will help us retain those dollars from people visiting our community. And that's it for this week for me.
Okay, Anna. Um, nothing for word net other than the first day school is August twenty seventh. And so the buses and everybody will be out and about again. Um, just I'm going to go off Curtis's uh Junior Police Academy. Just want to recognize Officer Lantieri and Officer Shan for running a great program. Um, and that the police picnic is September third. Uh, for Culture Parks and Rec, um, we recognized uh John Tebow and his retirement and there will be a reception on uh August twentieth from twelve to two to drop in and say thank you. Um, mentioned already this summer, uh end of summer blast at the farms. Um, there will be fireworks there, so um and then the pool is closing. I have it written down. I forgot where it is. When is the pool closing?
Twenty-sixth.
Oh, it's twenty-sixth.
John's last day, I'm on it.
Yes, so uh the pool is closing, so get your pool time in now. Aging and disability, we had a disability picnic on July nineteenth and it was a huge success. Thank you to um, the fire department and the ambulance and the police department for bringing the toucher trucks and uh Department of Public Works for bringing um trucks over to participate in that. There is an Aging in Place Expo on Friday uh September twelfth at the library. Um, and we are funding that through the grant that we all grouped from AARP and received and the um the mobile home on wheels um will be there showing what is available for people to age in place and how you can retrofit your homes. Um, so that you can stay in place. It's going to be really a a great program. Um, I I sent you the flyer and and we can uh submit it uh out on our social media if we'd like or or to residents or included in the minutes. Uh, but it it's going to be a great expo and really informative. Um, our Super Thursday, which had to be rescheduled um in May, has been rescheduled to Thursday August twenty-first and that happens to be Senior Citizens National Senior Citizens Day. Um, and that will take place at Eno. Um, and then the following Super Thursday after that will be the fashion show. So stay tuned.
What's the day of the fashion show?
Uh, October ninth.
Make sure.
Yes. Diane, I I just want to point out that um you gave us a sheet for um the activities for aging and disability earlier in the year and the Aging and Police Expo actually says Saturday.
It's not moved.
Thirteen. So I just want to make sure people are aware.
So it did get needed to get moved because the mobile home was not available on Saturdays. So thank you for pointing that out. It was originally on a Saturday and it was um when in we didn't do flyers and information to the public, but um the information we sent out to you, yes, it was on a Saturday. It is now on Friday.
Okay.
Thank you. From one to five. Um, Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts, as as Mark mentioned, had their twentieth anniversary. So congratulations to them. Um, they had an amazing season. Um, there with the Talk Mountain Music Festival, it was a big success. And um, we're going to be hopefully groundbreaking contract signing groundbreaking soon. So stay tuned on that. And they are bringing back Spooktacular this year. Um, but it's not only Spooktacular, it's Spectacular Booze and Brews. So they're combining the Spooktacular and the Brew Fest and making something for kids and something for adults. October eighteenth from one to five. Spooktacular booze and brews.
Booze like the spooky booze.
Is there a spooky booze? I was going to say spoos and booze.
Spooktacular. Spooktacular booze and brews.
Okay, I'm going to go down to Kevin now.
Library, uh, the board approved a new policy for circulation and copy and printing policy, the library material display. Policy is still under consideration. If anybody has comments on that, they can provide it. I shared, uh, thank you to the first electman for the comments on on Patrick's departure for Simsbury TV and um already said my my piece there. So that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we get to move into select and action. And the top item on the on the ready action is a talk to talk about um enacting the dogs at recreational facilities, athletic fields and trails, the ordinance. Um, so this was brought to the board by Tom Diversey, person, Culture Person, Director um and Mark. And as everyone's heard, we've heard from a lot of public comments. As Diana pointed out, we've got a lot of written public comments and I'd like to have the board um kind of weigh in on some of their thoughts or things that we might want to see adjusted. Um, Tom is.
Would you like me to come up?
Yeah, sure, sure. Uh, one thing I do want to point out that you've pointed out that we have a carry
Carry in, carry out policy that was adopted in two thousand sixteen. That's why there's not currently trash cans at our parks and along the trails and if that that was done at that point to because of two reasons. One, to save money and and the laborer's time, to be a short staff. It was also done because of the legal double, three things, exactly. Illegal dumping in those cans at Curtis Park and along the trail. Um, and the animals, the 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 wildlife problem we have in town with bears getting into trash cans. I mean, we could put more cans in parks, but what was happening at Central Secamore? Um, Curtis Park on the riverside, those places, the bears and raccoons and things were getting into the barrels and making a huge mess. Um, my my opinion and and I I think I'm pretty, pretty well observing of this is that if we go for cans out, as some some of the people mentioned, especially along Iron Horse Boulevard. Um, they're just, there's there may be some dog waste that makes it into those cans, but what's going to make it into those cans are Starbucks cups and and the different beverages people or food people consume along the trail. Uh, or they clean out their cars at Iron Boulevard and dump the stuff in there. We see it happening at Curtis Park and um, we made a choice, the town made a choice in two thousand sixteen to do that carry in, carry out policy. So if we start putting cans back into those places, we would do, we would have that issue. There are barrels uh after we enacted that policy, we did go back and revise it to to put cans at the Flower Bridge and Rotary Park in Simsbury Meadows because those are heavily used areas, um heavily used public areas. So those are the only two exceptions we make. Um, Little League uh pays for cans at Memorial Park, um soccer pays for cans at Curtis Park during their seasons. Um, but to have them up and down Iron Horse Boulevard um or along the trails in town, I mean, that's a that's a policy decision you guys would have to make, but the reason, you know, my opinion is responsible dog or their poop and take it with them. Um, but I said my piece with that though. So I'll take any questions or anything or listen to your discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to open it up to um to the boards and ask questions.
So, um, mine are not necessarily questions, we'll start about what I do. Um, I think that the residents who did speak and write in um raised some good points. Um, one in the definition of trails, also the addition of other facilities. And is there a reason that you chose the ones you did and didn't choose to expand it?
Good question. Uh, on the trails, it should my my I left it as trails because I I was thinking all trails. It's not why why should we single out both the use trails versus trails out, you know, out in the woods throughout the Walker Woods, that kind of thing. Um, the leash, the the important part we're overlooking, not only the poop, but it's the it's the component of the leash, having your dog on a leash. It's a safety thing, not only for you, for your yard, for your pet, but also for yourself. I mean, we have a lot of wildlife in the woods, again, bear, bug, yeah, things like that. If should your dog sees your off, your dog's off leash and sees one of those things, we've had incidents on the news the last couple of years, you know, in the plains and at the Walker, a dog ticks off after a bear, the owner wants to protect its dog and is trying to get the dog away from the bear. You're you're taking the chance of injuring yourself and and your 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 animal and your and yourself um going after the bear, trying to be disruptive, try to get it away. If your dog is on a leash when you're on those trails, you have every strain. You see a bear, you walk the other direct, you know, you take your dog to safety, take yourself to safety.
And I have the same question about trails and I think what's confusing also, as you mentioned trails, but under prohibitive prohibitions and permissions, you list very specific areas, but not a single one is a trail. So perhaps.
Because we said all uh all all trails, so.
I think putting it there would identify that as all trails.
Can I add on to that?
Absolutely.
Is it, so then somebody mentioned, I I had mentioned to you this morning, there's a couple of parks not listed here, right?
Yeah, town board should have been lifted. I guess oversight, I thought we had it in the initial.
Is there a benefit to just get the classification instead of the name of each one so that it broadly applies?
We could say all parks of recreation, all parks of recreation, I know there's been some talk about including town facilities. I mean, some of our residents have commented that it should be in all facility, now all all public spaces or town or public spaces. That's certainly I'm open to expanding, but my purview was parks of recreation still effective I was taking on.
And also too, I would say, um, if we create a new park, our new fields, it's not listed here. So view it in general, it's by the fact. And you mentioned um that soccer and baseball pay for their um, they pay less to.
They they contract with those, so the whatever waste company they charge for waste them.
Um, I have questions, but I'm going to open it then. Do you have pardon? I was.
I'm happy to hear from others.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, I know that uh it's redlined exemptions, um probably credentialed service dogs are exempt from this policy. And then it was redlined out. And my only concern is knowing that we support top soccer and challenger baseball and other um recreational uh opportunities for people with disabilities who may or may not need service dogs even on the field. Um, I would like to have some language in there that allows for those dogs. Clearly, if there's some disruption or they're um have dog waste, they the the owners are still responsible. But um, knowing that you we have people with disabilities uh often utilizing parks, that that um somehow we have wording in there. Or so.
Yeah, I would I would agree. I've, you know, thinking about it further that we we had a definition of under definition, what a properly trained service dog would be is a dog a dog that has a specific training to do a specific job. Um, I would agree that that's something we could, we should consider putting that in.
Yeah, I would just said, I I originally had asked to have that taken out because of the playing fields. But with an addition of what you're mentioning and all the playgrounds.
Right.
You know, it it seemed like it's it should be included.
I I I do think one one thing I know that's come up through social media and and I can't remember anybody said it tonight. It's important to know that we're not looking to ban dogs from from public spaces. We're we're just asking that they're maybe on a leash when they're in those public spaces and you know, they you can still have your dog beside you in a soccer game watching, watching your child play. The dog would just be leashed at that point. Uh, instead of, you know, off-leash work and potentially injure itself or another small child. Dogs should not be allowed on playgrounds where there's other small, you know, small kids who you know, may be interested in the dog and come over and and scare the dog or startle the dog and and you want to avoid those type of things. So we want to keep dogs off of those those spaces where they shouldn't be and in a under restraint where it plays a way they should be in common air in public spaces.
It is a, I have a question on the leash. So I'd ask you about the six-foot leash. And I know that was brought up about the retractables. But that's kind of hard. I think the six-foot leash could indicate that if you have a retractable, you keep it at six feet rather than pulling it out specifically. Um, I did question the six-foot leash, but um that was the one that you have, we looked at Canton's and that's what the majority of the other towns had. As as the size.
Yes, that's what some other towns have used. I mean, there what some people may consider, you know, the loophole, if you have, you don't put a six-foot in there, or you could have some of the some of what's sold on the market are those thirty-foot leads and you could be, what Diana mentioned before, you could be out on the trail. And well, my dog's on a on a leash, but it's thirty feet away from me across the side of the trail and get clothes lining somebody as they go by. Or you don't have that that quick restraint, should you see, should a small child run up to you or uh an animal come out of the woods or or something, or another dog, you know, coming at you from the other direction on the trail. You know, a six-foot range is is probably a good estimate. Are we going to go out and tape measure everybody? No, but it's a six-minute, a six, a six-foot lead is pretty self-sufficient for rather than a thirty-foot, thirty-four lead.
I have another question, but I want to open to other. Well, I, one is, um, again, the list here. Um, you know, like I said, some things are not included and I noticed that Central School was crossed out. I don't know why.
Central School has a baseball, well, it does have a baseball.
Like there said, no dogs on it.
It was, it's because it's in the twice.
Okay, sorry. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
They had a playground there.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, okay. Thanks. So, um, any anybody else have comments on that, on this at all? I I think the other thing I was going to ask is, it would be nice, I mean, I was, I had a lot of questions on this as a dog person because I just questioned if people have nowhere to bring their dog and a lot of people can't bring their dogs to a dog park because their dogs may or may not get along with other dogs. But I I definitely agree with the leash, the leash law and the the sports fields and everything like that. So I've come around and I've heard from the public and I agree with it. Um, I guess the question is, is there, is there a way to make this cover a lot of the things that we received in the in the communications? Um, to firm it up a little bit better? Or are people happy with how it's written today?
No, I I don't think it's ready yet.
Okay.
We're in a different, we're really, that we need to do something.
Okay, yeah.
So I I I I am concerned about the the six-foot requirement. I think it's overly prescriptive. I think that there's a difference between what we want to establish in law and through the ordinance and what's maybe a best practice in educating the board. So that we can um discuss the uh realities of requiring uh a dog to be leashed. Um, I think there's also a reasonable understanding that some dogs and breed are different. Um, you know, out on a rail, for instance, a six-foot leash for the dog that likes a trail hike is probably too short. And um, you know, Vermont and other places, uh, you know, then have and probably other towns and in Connecticut too, you know, talk about under the um, there's certain language that I use under the obvious verbal control of the owners. So again, some breeds are just better than others at recall. Uh, you can have, I had a Beagle Basset. You can put him on a leash, he's not going to stop pulling just the way that is. But all the retrievers or whatever, just recall a better. So I think being overly prescriptive in this is some we should be cautious of, especially since we're restricting access uh to the public um uh places. I agree with what you were saying about adding other receptacles. Sounds like a good idea. That's additional complications. So I don't think that's necessarily what we need to do yeah in this uh, you know, ordinance. But there's a couple of places in here too where we, you know, uh, reference ordinance and policy just needs to get cleaned up. Uh, citizens versus individuals in there, the owners and the keepers need to be cleaned up. Henry James Memorial School versus um middle school, just some of the other language in here, just figuring uh that part out. I just don't think that we're, I'm I'm not ready at least to vote on it.
Yeah.
Um, to. I didn't hear the discussion too about um. I didn't hear the discussion too about um. The uh, the service dog, both in training and, and um, um, credential service dog that's. Crossed out in my copy here and I just, this is a good speaker. Yeah, thank you, and so we brought up in uh, uh, Mr. Reader brought it up, I think as well.
Yes, that was my, like, one of the bigger things that I had concerns about.
So I, I would be open to, like, com- compiling all those other comments. Providing, you know, ways to clean this up, potentially tabling this and bring back a better draft or cleaner draft. That covers a lot of what people have brought up at the next meeting. Uh, I mean, I, I don't think it's urgent to have it done tonight. I know you'd like to get it done. But um, with the board wanted um make a motion to table this. And come back with a cleaner version, or do you feel that Tom can take down all the notes that we have and make those adjustments? Um, defer to, how about a motion to table till next meeting?
Yes, yeah, we, we don't have it on the, on, you know, right now. I'm happy to, to table it. I think it's awesome that it's been brought to. Your attention. Obviously, this has been a festering issue that I haven't been personally getting with at some of these other places, but. Glad that it'll be cleaned up before my daughter's on, you know, by the time. But, you know, it happens, so.
Yeah, so the motion to table is, is, is there?
I'll move to table, uh.
It's option B, actually. It's, it's on here. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Um, the next item is the enacting of the effective date of the tax exemption. Mark, I'm gonna let you talk about this one, it's basically a result of the Manassas um issue that's.
Yeah, I can be brief on this chair. I, it, it, it's such a rare occurrence, but one of the things we learned when this board was uh. I'm taking up the issue with tax abatement on the uh, on the Manassas uh, organization. Uh, and for the benefit of the public, this only really happens when one tax exempt organization is buying another one and. You know, you, you end up with best work in the assessment period that created the problem for Manassas. So what's before you is tonight and we didn't get any. Uh, comments before or against from the public, uh, it's just a cleanup, um. Uh, the state enabling legislation allows the, the local municipality to opt in and that's what you're doing. I am happy to take any questions, but I think that you're probably gonna see this very rarely used, but what it will prevent. Is the, the type of uh, uh, extensive effort that we all needed to go through together to solve the mass problem, right? Uh, next time, the assessor can take care of it. Uh, so we appreciate your support.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna read the motion as it is. Um, ask for a motion effective August eleventh, twenty twenty five, to enact the proposed. Ordinance of Town Code, Chapter one forty one, Article twelve, effective date. Of a tax exemption upon real property acquisition for qualifying tax exempt entities. As presented, which shall be effective twenty one days after publication. In a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury and further move to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance be published.
Summed up.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh, now we move down to the scheduling the public hearing on a proposed withholding bid, building permits on tax alignment properties. Um, this is something I brought up to Mark and Art took it in, um, I'm gonna let him um discuss that. Well, we really are gonna schedule a hearing, but if you want to give a little background.
Very quickly, Chair, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I know this was something that uh. Our, uh, our development and planning folks have been looking at it as well. It's very simple that. If you uh are delinquent on your property taxes, and that's real estate. Personal property or motor vehicle, if you're delinquent on your taxes to the town of Simsbury. Uh, you're not gonna be issued a building permit. Uh, and this ordinance follows closely what other municipalities have done in the state of Connecticut. Um, and many of them have had this on the books for quite a long time. So my understanding is this was discussed at one point a few years ago here in town and then just, for whatever reason, didn't. Didn't make it to, to the finish line. So we'd urge uh. Uh, approval, swift approval, actually, uh, if the board is so fine, I'm happy to take any questions. Oh, one other thing, Chair.
Sir.
I believe if the, the uh, the tax collector won't have discretion to. If, for example, somebody's on a payment plan or, you know, it's not a hard and fast. Rule, obviously, we want to work with all of our. Uh, stakeholders who are interested in, in developing and, and making, you know, additions, whatever it may be. But the message we're sending is, is that you need to be current on your taxes.
I'll be honest, I, I don't like that provision.
Yeah.
I think you should be current if we're going to enable staff to work on the project and actually issue a building permit. So I understand that they work on it. But when you're actually have enough money to pull the permit and build. No offense, but you should have enough money to settle up with the town. So.
Our read of that uh selection is that, that the enabling legislation doesn't allow it and, and. We, we can't put up barriers to, to public coming in and asking us to do something in our.
No, I agree with that.
But, but legally you could say we're not issuing, right? So you're, it's a very good point. Why would you let them go through it if you know they're delinquent and they're not going to? But there is a, a method to our madness, which is that we wouldn't want to be challenged in court. On an ordinance that we're recommending. So, but, you know, out of an abundance of caution, it's, it's the. The issuance of the permit, not the request to plan something to paint.
And we're scheduling a public hearing, so we will have to come back to this and do that again. Um, so I could ask for a motion effective August eleven, twenty twenty five, to set a public hearing to receive public comment. Regarding a proposed withholding building per- withholding building permits on tax building win. Properties ordinance for six P M on Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Sorry, all those in favor say aye. Okay, the next item, interesting to discussion. Um, so I, I brought this up to Mark and Mark um. Discuss this because. Um, I don't know when it was, maybe seven months ago, there, there's been conversations. From what I've heard ongoing about moving three fifteen um to get traffic out of Tariffill on Elm Street. And um, you know, State Representative Melissa Adman had come to us on that. Um, the D O T then came to the town to discuss it with the town. And it does involve a lot of town resources to make that happen, to move it to East Gramby, Gramby. Um, the town wouldn't hear at the bridge, we would have to do some sort of, um. Not sure, but they said something about, you know, making sure the roads conditions were, were met up to certain code. So one of the suggestions, actually, we heard from some residents um. In, in Simsbury was to, you know, it had come up before too about just putting a no through truck sign on three fifteen. Um, and there are a couple no through truck signs in town that I noticed over where we live on Quarry Road. And um, East Weetaw. So the theory was, can we do something like that? On Elm Street. Um, the issue on Elm Street is that it's a state road. So what we would be doing here is just asking Mark to, to work with the local traffic authority and to see if there's a way that we can get. The signs put up on three fifteen. So I'm gonna open that up for discussion, otherwise I will ask, I will read the motion.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So it would be, it would go through the D O T approval process?
Yes, well, you know, it's, it's funny you said it, because it's a state road, we've kind of asked their permission. Uh, and uh, you know, we do, we would do that through D O T. Uh, to, to, A, find out if they're, if they're agreeable and if so, exactly where to put them. Uh, so that I think the, the thinking is two signs strategically placed, but we need state approval. And, you know, this motion authorizes us. Uh, you know, Tomboy and I would be probably leading that discussion with D O T. Um, we don't have a sense right now how that will go, um, but um, certainly willing to try.
And if it were to. If we were allowed to put the signs up, would enforcement be through local police or state?
So enforcement is a different issue. I, I don't think that the, the mere posting of the signs gives us the. Uh, enforcement authority on a state road, right? So, you know, the signs will be. Um, signs, just essentially voluntary, right? So. By, by the request to the board of selectmen, whatever, and, and this is, I think, one of the issues that the state might have with it is. You know, how, how willing would the state be to allow the town to put a sign up that, that we really can't enforce on a state road in any of that, but. You know, there often is compliance with signs, whether it is enforcement or not, it's kind of like the dog. Who, or, you know, are we hiring the dog police? I, I don't know, uh, or the leash police. Um, but um, I hope that answers your question. I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to those conversations with the state because. I haven't, I haven't worked on something like this before, so we'll see what they say.
And they might like it more than moving three fifteen. Yes, that's kind of another, another item. Oh, anybody else?
Like, how would they do, how would you define that? Can Amazon?
Well, you can go to, if you're delivering to somewhere, you can go, but it's not.
On that street.
In that neighborhood.
We'd be asking them to go over Floydville if they needed to deliver to animals.
Yeah, I just mentioned too that, that, uh, because the police chief reminded me when, when this came up, I think, uh, last week that. You know, the issue is that GPS is directing you in it. And so, and we do, you do as a board is not gonna change. Uh, sat navigation, which, you know, and uh. And so to what extent would this be successful? But, you know, again, not, not the adventure, nothing gained.
I, 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 I think that this is um, a nice idea to suggest, and we were at the um. The Tariffill, um, the plan uh hearing, I'm making a different knowledge wrong, and this did come up. Um, and I think it's a concern for residents who live there and all of us have driven on a very narrow road. That's shared by pedestrians, uh, people who have yards and some very large uh trucks to go through there. Um, I think that asking, you know, trucks that do business to consider rerouting, I think is a, is a nice idea. I don't know what the result will be. One of my concerns will be is disappointing residents who live there. Um, and, you know, causing a circumstance that's now antagonizing. We, we heard it earlier about. Um, you know, a confusion about whether or not dogs were allowed on the soccer fields. Uh, from somebody, and so I didn't know that there was a rule or whatever, and if residents think that we have passed an ordinance, and they will. Uh, that says that trucks aren't allowed through there and they continue to see trucks, the perspective will be that the town is not enforcing. Its own laws, uh, or that those trucks, the big label or whatever business is now. Somebody that they don't want to do business with or et cetera. So as we try to find the right sized solution for residents here and hear their concerns. Uh, for those who live there, I think we want to be cautious as we proceed. If the question tonight is. Um, to um engage with the D O T and uh, create a solution that's workable. Um, and one of those solutions is, um, you know, no through truck sign, I can, I can support that, but I would. But in the end, I would be cautious of creating a circumstance like we should have just described that, um, that uh further confused the issue.
Although we're not looking to pass an ordinance, I understand, I hear what you're saying, yes.
Used the wrong word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because uh, we are not looking to pass an ordinance, this would be signage, and I, I hear that point, although. Um, anything that we can do as a deterrent. I think is a benefit to our residents, you know, and anything that we can put up there to say. You know, this is, like, there, there are other signs, whether they're enforceable or not around town, you know. A deaf child, uh, i- i- you know, zone, a blind person zone. I've had multiple conversations with the. Chief over the years about, you know, like having an autism sign me and, and the benefits and the drawbacks to, to all of that. Um, whether or not. When people see that uh deaf child zone, you know, or even when people put out those signs on their driveways, child, you know, slow down. Um, whether or not people actually heed them is another thing, but it, you, they are recognizable and if it. If it is a deterrent for anybody, I think it's benefit, um, you know, than not.
I think also, uh, even considering the challenges with the GPS system. Um, as trucks travel down that way and start to see the signs, and they might realize them, especially. How we have it now with East Weetaw quarry, it sort of bleeds right into there, so.
Well, but, well, I'll just glance on, on ways and point out, oh, report, this is a no truck zone.
It all connects to those, the streets in that whole area, so it.
And it is.
Yeah.
A big beneficial.
So East Gramby has that atrocious sign available, said it. But the verbiage is on it per request of the board selectmen, literally.
Yeah.
That's the verbiage on it. And it doesn't have to be as big as a sign, it can be small, but I think what you raise is a concern. Setting an expectation to the Tariffill residents would be acknowledged by saying we are limited. To requesting this.
Yeah.
That it's not enforceable by.
Great.
Local police may be afraid.
It's not like you have school zone signs.
It's a, it's a great point and. Because the other no through truck signs, we don't know if those are enforced either. Um, we, and I just want to say the point that Kevin made, we did bring, run this by Brittany to make sure that it was in alignment to the terrible plan. Um, so I'm gonna ask for a motion, sorry. Um, effective August eleven, to authorize the town manager to order with the local traffic authority, the Connecticut D O T. Our state legislators to seek approval and follow necessary steps to erect signage. Requesting that no through trucks be allowed to travel along three, three fifteen and Simsbury Tariffill for the board to select.
Summed up.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, the next item is the town manager's annual performance review, it's a little longer than the annual. Um, so first of all, I want to thank Personnel Subcommittee, Heather and Steve for, for taking all the comments and input from the. Full board to, to consolidate that into something that um is a good representation, I feel, um, of Mark. Uh, we did start this back in March, um, in April, so it's been, it's been a long time coming. But I, I feel that the end product um has, has come out really good. Um, I do ask that everybody read the. Um, performance review, because it's our town manager and he's working for the town, so I think that should happen. I do want to just make a couple of comments. Um, you know, there was a process, I think we've described the process a few times, but we've done rankings on attributes and goals. Um, and overall assessment, and it comes out to an American numerical result, which is in here. I'm, I'm gonna just read a little bit about this. Um, in, in the first year, as town manager Mark has brought new energy, creativity and a collaborative spirit to the role. Um, he's brought a lot of um professional experience and thoughtful approach to public service. It's left a positive impression on staff, the board of selectmen and the wider Simsbury community. He's also demonstrated strong interpersonal skills, a willingness to engage with residents and staff. And a sincere desire to foster supportive and productive workplace environment. I'm pretty sure we would all say that if you need to have talked to Mark about something, whether it's a debate or it's not. Um, he's, he's always there to, to talk it through. Um, we did point out a couple of things, and again, I, I asked you to read this, a couple of concerns that we all had. Um, was about the role clarity in governance structure, which we addressed in here. Um, you know, as a, a, the town man- manager is really an administrative, non-political role. Mark brings to this job a lot of. Experience across the board. And then, um, another thing that we did ask for was, um, improve communications and materials, get information to our board. Um, on time and in a manner that's professional and digestible. But, um, overall, um, thank you, Mark, for your service. And, um, I'm gonna.
Appreciate.
Leave it at that, if that's okay, and ask. For a motion effective August eleven, twenty twenty five, to accept the town manager's annual performance review. Summary and further move to increase the town manager's salary by two point five percent. To one ninety seven, nine fifty three, retroactive to July first, twenty twenty five.
Will move second.
Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll echo uh the comments earlier. Mark, thank you for your service to town, uh, coming into the community during um. Uh, time of transition, we've had our conversations here. I think that there's a difficulty in trying to pull together, um. Sometimes different comments, but sometimes unified comments from all the members, so uh, thank you to the first selectmen and the personnel. Subcommittee for attempting to do that. I, I think that this continues to be a push and pull for this. Community and, and trying to understand how best to work with the town manager, but Mark has no problem with figuring out. Work as a senior executive in a community like this, and so finding, finding and striking that balance uh continues to be a partnership, and so that's all for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I will just say that, um, sometimes numerical values don't necessarily reflect. A whole picture, but I think we've done a good job. Um, I think this shows that Mark has some lab strengths. But as in any position, and even for myself, as, as now two year into this job, there was things I needed to learn and. Uh, room for improvement and, and things to learn, and I think that we're all moving in a good direction.
Who else?
I would just like to say thank you as well, and, you know, it takes, it takes time coming into a new community and learning and, and. Figuring it out, um, you know, obviously, there's always learning.
It's been fun. Appreciate working with all of you, and, and thank you too. I could just say. Chair, you've done a great job, everybody's done a wonderful job, and. Um, thank you for your patience and, and, and some of the things that we've worked through together. Uh, I'm, I'm proud of the achievements that we, that we've all uh achieved over the last year and a half, looking forward to the next year.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll. All those in favor say aye. Okay. Um, oh, the seal, can this miss little?
Apparently, sorry.
Oh, here it is, here we go. So, um. Well, we, I, we've had discussions about the color of the pins, the color of the flag, magnetic pins. Um, so I'm gonna let Mark. Uh, Mark, yeah, go on the, how this came about. Basically, we have a proposal to have new pins. Basically, we have a proposal to have new pins of nicer color, uh, more neutral color that goes with everyone's outfits, usually. Um, and so do you want to add anything?
Thank, thank you, Chair. Good, just, just a point of clarity, you know, it's, it's less about the pins than, than the seal itself, obviously. I think the, you know, the pins are kind of cool. The, the, what we have tried to do is, uh, and you'll notice, of course, as you know, we've now got the three flag balls out front. And we've, we've raised the town flag for the first time in many years. Uh, and, uh, so we've tried, uh, with your leadership, uh, board to, to upgrade things and everything from letterhead to the proclamations and, and all of this. And, uh, we noticed that, that seal, uh, has been, it, it was created before high definition. Uh, and it's very intricate, you know?
Not before photocopy or?
Not before.
Right.
I think if you copied it a thousand times and, and then add to that, there was, you know, no, really no color. Um, and so, um, the first selectman came in and, and, and looked at it. And, and we actually looked at what our police department had done with their, uh, badges and insignia and so forth. And, you know, it's, I can't put it up on the screen, but it, the, the digital picture is in the packets and is online. Uh, the, really the only change, as Wendy mentioned, is the addition of color. Um, and it is now a high definition, uh, a, a higher digital quality and, and will be professionally constructed. So it will photocopy better, uh, it makes the pins, uh, good. Uh, and I think it's, uh, we're, I think the main point is, Chair, we're not making any substantive changes to the historical component that, that represents the town symbol. We're just making it clear. My vision is going downhill, I know, uh, and we all age, so maybe we need to approve this. Thank you, Chair.
Brace, brace of glasses.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Ask for a motion effective August 11th, 2025 to approve the proposed enhancements to the town seal and authorize town manager Mark Nelson to direct town clerk Trish Monroe to file a certificate describing this change to the secretary of the state of Connecticut.
Sum up.
My vote will be contingent on the letterhead font getting figured out.
Yeah.
Along with it. It's crazy wonky. We'll do that. All right. It's, you guys don't work hard and it's the last thing you're thinking about today.
And I'm not making it happen, but go on that.
Yeah.
No, no fiscal impact either.
No, no effect, yeah.
We'll, we'll talk about the other, uh, improvements we might want to. Um, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks.
Seal. Okay. And now the, the last?
Put on the fins, please.
Oh, I get my notes. I can look at it.
Yeah.
So, so the last item is something that came up in 2022 and after the Meadowwood purchase. Um, I'll, I'll read some of the letter. I didn't, I know everybody had it, but, uh, basically, um, the shippo has reached out to us to, to try to get Meadowwood on this, this state historical presentation. Well, you know, to get it on the National Register of Historic Places. And, um, it came in 22, I believe, and it never happened. So they came back. Um, they talked to Mark, they talked to George, they, they reached out to me about it. And, um, basically they would like to, to have it on the National Register. There's benefits to it in that, um, first of all, if we do it within this time period, they waive the $20,000 fee, um, normally to do a nomination. Um, it's also, uh, opens us to potential grant program, because nothing has really happened at Meadowwood. We have state opportunities, but if there's ever, um, things that may need restored or done there, there's potentials for, for grants in the future. Um, they want to continue this recognition effort by completing a National Register of Historic Places nomination for the property. Um, as I said, it was started earlier. All this is doing is, um, authorizing the town manager and, and team to complete the nomination process and see if we, if it goes forward. Um, so I'm not sure if there's anybody asked questions on, on it or not, but, uh, if, if we read also the attached, there's a lot of things that it does and does not do. Um, so they're pretty, pretty specific and, um, then it alleviates any concerns I think that I would have going forward with.
There's no, this is not limited to our use, no. Correct.
Um, it does, it says, um, under the National Register does not restrict the rights of private property owners in the use, development or sale of the property. So whatever's designated to us, if, if anything ever does happen there, um, it's states that it's not going to. Um, so I'm going to ask for a motion effective August 11th, 2025 to authorize, um, the completion and submission of the National Register nomination form for the Meadowwood property located on Hoskins Road.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I think.
Sorry.
Uh, Curtis.
Yeah. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? So, so, okay. Um, so that's that. Um, in the minutes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 14th, 2025.
I mean, second.
Um, is there any discussion? I have discussion. Um, I found under the consent agenda, this, it, it says the consent agenda, it included, um, to move, um, authorize the town manager to execute the license agreement with the Simsbury Soccer Club. I don't think that was on consent. So I'd like to have that taken out.
Consider it done, Chair.
Okay. Any, anybody have any other changes? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes?
Is there something else that was supposed to be there or is that just included?
Some.
Yeah. I didn't go that far because I think this is.
I, uh, I did not catch that, uh, either. So I, I'm willing to accept that as a amendment. If we forgot that, then we can update the record.
Um.
I have no other comments.
Well.
Well, whatever letters C, D and I were, I believe.
Maybe we just took down the, get down the wrong.
Yeah. So just, it should just be C.
Well, this says.
Well, with C, maybe C was written in something different.
Right.
C, yeah, I will go back and check that agenda. I will go check.
So with that correction, um, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. And I think I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Delude.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.